Yeah, I mean, you don't have to answer it, but I think you got, as far as ARB goes, I think we've given enough direction, right?
I think you've given enough direction to the applicant on ARB at this point. I think you should probably then move on to site plan and Natalie's comment.
Natalie? You can skip the ARB stuff. You just go right there.
Yeah, I will mostly skip the ARB stuff, but I do want to just call attention to the applicant that the original plans that suggested that everything you all would say would match the Stone Village buildings, so that's something that you guys should confirm as part of this process for ARB. You know, I think at this point, we know you guys are going to submit the footprint based on the survey of the foundation, so that that can be reviewed with the board. That was one of our comments. Also, you are going to provide a new rendering showing the original portico, you know, so that the board knows what they're approving essentially. And really, I think that, you know, we've all gotten out of this discussion, consistency among materials is still important between the elevations, the rendering, and then the site plan, you know, because that's what the board wants and, you know, they're approving it essentially that way. I did not comment on the bulkhead, although now that it's been raised, that should be confirmed, the height and compliance, the height of the building and compliance with the code, so that's an additional comment that's not listed in my memo. We did have comments on the site plan changes, which I don't know necessarily, maybe we want to wait to talk about them for the next submission, once we get the revised renderings and the portico issue is kind of resolved, because I think that was the big modification essentially to the plan and how traffic was going to be navigated throughout the site and the changes in landscaped islands and things like that. You know, although there were some other issues that were, that came up during construction, you know, including the guardrail, which is something that we had recommended be referred to the highway department, you know, in addition to the applicant, we spoke with the highway department, so I can talk about that now, or we can talk about it, you know, after it goes to Rob.
Let it go to Rob and let him put it in.
Sure.
Let him put it in writing, please.
Sure. You know, so I think that, you know, again, I think we'll wait to talk about those as part of the next appearance. One thing that the applicant should consider, though, is with the changes to the facade of the building, you know, and again, if the footprint is varied from the original site plan to now, if there are changes to landscaping and lighting, then that should be shown on modified site plan, you know, again, so it's something for you guys to consider and look at.
Natalie, do we have a landscaping plan?
Yeah, yes, there is.
Okay, can we, so let's make sure we get a comparison of what's...
Sure, well, and again, that's going to be, so the applicant needs to submit the new one if there are changes, right? Yes, so, oh, another big thing, actually, really quickly for everybody, is the issue on signage. So, as part of the original approval, it came up multiple times in discussion with the board, that if a second wall sign was going to be proposed, there was a potential need for variance, because the code signage table allows one wall sign per use. At the time, the resolution, I think, tracked that issue by requiring all signage be approved by the building department, New York State Thruway, and there was one other authority, I think it might have been the highway department, in accordance with the code and regular requirements. So, if you guys are proposing two wall signs, I think it is the disposition at this time, you know, and again, it can be referred to Mike, although we've had similar applications come before the board that had to get a variance, you will need probably a variance, is what I'm getting.
Yeah.
They will need a variance.
They will need a variance.
Do you want a sign to approve in the, in planning board documents?
There were no two signs approved.
The resolution specifically said that you still needed to comply with code requirements and thruway referral?
Yes, the thruway, because the second sign, if it was approved, would be on that facade that faces the thruway, yes. So, what happened was no signs were approved as part of the original application, so this is fresh for the board, and, you know, again, I think that variance is needed if that's going to be proposed at this time. Also, you know, I think George and everybody is familiar essentially with the code requirements for signage, so we discussed illumination and reduction in intensity after midnight, because obviously this will be an ongoing use through nighttime hours. And, I mean, I think I've just droned on enough, so we defer to counsel on the seeker and the GML referral, a public hearing will be required, and I think, you know, the threshold things have already been raised.
Questions for Natalie?
So, my stuff's actually pretty minor on this one. We talked about some of it. This application potentially is subject to the moratorium, so we just need to take another look at that based on what is being proposed. But more importantly, in terms of seeker, I don't think that this raises any additional environmental concerns, so you could reaffirm your 2016 negative declaration. This was referred under GML back in March. One thing was that the ARB form that was submitted to you was actually modified from the current application that's available on file in the building department, so I wanted you to, I know we are done talking about ARB, but take a look at that and consider if you want the applicant to resubmit the form that the village actually uses. And site plan changes for Natalie, she already covered that.
And the ARB form should be consistent with what is with every other application.
Well, I think, and it would make sense, too, for the applicant to put down the specific style type whatever, so that it's in there.
Can I check?
Sure.
The ARB form that's available on the website relates to residential. It's not that. So, there was a modification, but I think it's form, not substance.
Well, I'll dub...
We'll certainly...
That would be the first time somebody's raised that. Now I have to look.
Yeah.
I believe him, but now I'm going to have to update the form. Thanks, George, I had enough on my to-do list.
Well, you can use that. I'll send over.
All right. Any questions for the consultants from the board? Okay, what I would like to do at this time is I'm going to offer a motion to have counsel draft a letter to the building department that there are still outstanding issues with the original resolution as far as off-site improvements go, that need to be met before the CO is issued, so that no COs are issued for this building prior to those, whatever is, what's required in the resolution is met.
Okay, so there's the resolution and the developer's agreement. What I can do is I can put something together, letting them know that there are still items that are outstanding from both of those, related specifically to off-site improvements that need to be concluded prior to the issuance of a CO, so that they're there and there's a checklist.
Yes, please. Can I get a second on that motion?
A second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
We don't object to setting them up, but point of information, two of those off-site improvements require action by the village.
Yep, and she owned up to that.
One of them is with me, I did. I called him earlier and said that sidewalk is with me.
Right, so we, what we anticipate doing is meeting with the village, going over what has to be done, what needs to be done, and who's going to do it, and see if it's, to work up plan and action to make sure everything's done by the time we're looking for the CO. We're aware of that, and we know there's stuff to be done.
Well, we just want to make sure everybody's aware of, aware of that.
That'd be great, that way they will get done.
Yep.
In a timely fashion, because they want to open.
Yes.
We have everything we can do to get it done.
And if there's an issue with the village part, we will make sure that gets addressed correctly, not to hold you up.
We anticipate working with the village, village board to make sure those are the complimentary details.
Thank you, sir. That's it?
I got more homework from George tonight. Oh, my gosh!
Also, do you want to make a formal referral to Rob?
I'll offer a motion to refer the, it's the issues with the guardrail and the bus shelters, right?
Yeah, we'll want to talk about bus shelters, yeah.
Okay.
There's actually a couple of other things to ask approved on the development plan.
I know, but there are definitely, there were questions about the guardrail on the left of the entrance, the right of the entrance, the need for the bus shelters.
The developer, developers agree with the app, the village requires installation of the style, requires some rendering there, so we just need to, we know we need to take care of that stuff as well.
Okay.
So, make sure you guys...
No, but I know you want an opinion from Rob as far as what guardrails need to go back on the left side.
We want to do whatever Rob recommends you to do.
Okay, so we'll make sure Rob puts it all in writing.
I'm sure Rob will, is capable to do it.
Yes, so if you want to have me draft a letter referring it to the highway superintendent regarding the outstanding issues for off-site items specifically, including but not limited to the guardrail and the bus shelters?
Yeah, and there's some signage.
Including but not limited to...
Not limited, yes, you're right, I'm sorry.
No, no, I got it, I just want to make sure I do it.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got you with the motion.
That was me with the motion, a second on that, okay? My, what's my, questions on that? All in favor? Aye.
And while the applicant is considering whether they want the second wall sign, do you want to do a referral to the ZBA at this time, in case they're like, yes, we want that second wall sign?
It wouldn't hurt, right?
Okay.
All right, so you'll make the motion, I'll second. I'll second your motion. Any questions?
That one's...
All in favor? Aye.
And then, just to clarify, you guys have authorized a consultant work session with the applicant?
Yes.
And Colliers should be included in the discussion about off-site improvements, because they did review that original traffic safety plan and whatnot. Just for, we'll all be...
I don't want to drink.
He'll be CC'd on my letter.
True. What we need to do is what's on truth.
If there's any changes, yeah.
Ooh. I forgot why we're still here.
We would certainly welcome two representatives of the board when we have that discussion about how to make the rendering better.
We will see who is available when the meeting invite gets sent out.
I appreciate the input you provided, and we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
See you soon.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, Timber Trail, review and discuss draft resolution for amended subdivision ARB and ridge preservation of proposed single-family dwelling located within a previously approved subdivision of Holocourt in Highland Mills. Said property is known on the village of Woodbury tax maps, section 237, block 2, lot 5 through 11.
Hi.
Hey, Larry.
Our, our plan for the Holocourt, the cul-de-sac, that's what committed us. This project was at the final board, I believe, maybe last month, or mid the month before. We did revise our plans, made all houses smaller at the request of the board, to better fit with the neighboring cul-de-sac, and/or which is 300 feet from this development. Basically, we did show the device floor plan, device elevations. The last sheet shows, on the bottom, it has previous square footage and the proposed square footage, and the houses within the 300 feet of this development. Basically, we, at this point, all the houses are smaller than the bigger houses of that cul-de-sac. We reduced the one that's 400 to 90 square feet, the other one with 174, other one with 400 square feet. We, like, this reduced the footprint as well, leave all the information, and accept the top table in the residential cul-de-sac. The one, the middle one is the proposed one, and the bottom one is what was previously proposed at the previous, at the previous final board, and which is residential to most.
Are you reading off page 13, Larry?
Yeah, this one.
Okay.
So, as you can see, okay, so another thing we did, again, the board had a concern with lot 8 existing lot being smaller than the rest of it, so we do, we are proposing in addition to that, that's, that's the vacant, still on, but the same order, in order to better fit with the seven other proposed or eight other, seven other proposed lots. The one on the bottom, that's the previously proposed one.
Okay, and these are the renderings, right?
Yeah, so this is, this is the one that is existing. Now, this is the proposed lot one garage on the side, which is going to get a very close to square footage of the proposed houses. At a previous meeting, he asked us to show how it would look if the garage was on the side. To me, I don't, to me, again, makes the house a little bit wider, because the width of a garage is usually much smaller than the length of the garage, so that is how it would look. Again, I'm not a big fan of it, mostly because that is going to have a longer driveway, which means the driveway has to go in very deep, also has to have a turnaround, basically doubles the lot, the area of the lot, which is not going to have grass or anything like that. So, I would prefer the one, one because it's narrow, the other thing because it's just a waste of grass and all of that. You just need a bigger turnaround, which is, I believe, it's much easier to get the people to hear where the board says. So, those are the three major changes that we get into this project.
So, question, Larry, but I know you says putting the garage on the side makes it wider, but then it makes it shorter, it's the house overall length shorter, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Which was what we were trying to, I think this board was trying to accomplish, because you...
Me, if I remember well, a lot of the board's trying to get it smaller, because they said that these lots are smaller and longer.
Right.
So, it's going to be too close to each houses, but by doing this, it's going to be even closer to the neighboring house, unless it's wider. Long, we have, it's long enough, it doesn't matter, but it's narrow enough, not, lots if it gets wider, plus if you have the garage, then it kind of connects those houses more. Plus, you have the driveway in between, kind of connects the house to more and more. The width in between the house gets smaller, the, I mean, the distance.
The width between, like, the driveway essentially and the lot line gets smaller?
Yeah, not between driveway, between the edge of the houses, and if the house is bigger, the lot is seven feet, and the house is 50 feet, okay, then you have 20 feet in between, then you have 20 feet in between the lot line and the house. From now all sudden, the house is 10 feet wider, then you have, you have less, you have the lot line at the edge of the house.
Are the two homes where the driveway entrance is in the front, essentially the garage door is in the front and the garage door is on the side, the size of the home for each of those is the same, correct?
Correct, but instead of the garage being from front to back, it's all sort of side to side, so it's going to be wider, the house, but...
Widthwise, yeah, okay.
So, now, the side yards is going to be more smaller. If we do that.
No, I'm confused. The backyard would change, right, the rear yard would change?
The rear yard is going to be, there's going to be a difference, but if the house is wider, the two side yards is going to get increased, correct?
If it's wider?
Yeah.
But between the two, it's not getting wider, correct?
What I mean, the pre-imbush.
Maybe it's...
With the old one at the post?
Yeah.
Okay, so the old one is the one with the garage on the side.
Correct.
And the new one is the old one, because now it's going to look, you'll be put garage doors on the side.
Correct.
Okay, so, oh, so now, it's only, it's only a one, it's only a single garage house, okay? Garage is typically 15 or 14, about 25, correct? So, now we turn the whole 14 to 25 to the side, so now the highest, now the house is this wider, okay, which means it's left and less coming to the side, between the, between the, this house and the lot, which means it's less, I mean, the neighboring lot, which also gets smaller, because all the houses have changed.
Understood, so the width of the home is changing then by that dimension, that 14 to 25 difference?
Um, exactly, the, only gets about 7 feet, or the house gets about 7 feet.
So, that's the board's feedback, thoughts?
Obviously, this is not going to have this, we're not going to have the side, this is an existing, now the driveway, plus, as now we have the garage on the side for the house, correct, so we have that long charing driveway, but that's going to get removed if this addition.
But this is the house that's built, right?
Garage on the side, the rightward addition is, is proposed.
And the, that's new, right? I'm sorry, that, because that wasn't part of the application last time, so that's the house that's built, and is that now part of the application this time, where lot 8 is going to be included with an addition?
Correct, unless the board is okay with it, as I mentioned, I believe, last, last develop, last planning board meeting, that the neighboring cul-de-sac also has more houses, even smaller than this. If the board is okay without the addition, we're going to remove it other board processes that...
Okay. And when it's, I'm sorry, I just have one more question. I was trying to follow the deep, whatever, when it's facing the front, it's just like one car length deep, or is it a double?
No, one car.
It's one car?
Right, that's the garage, correct.
Okay, well, sometimes people like pull in two, and then when it's to the side, is it still just one, or are you making it a two?
No, no, but then you, you then have to leave, like, oh, turnaround.
Right, okay. You can't just...
Back out.
Okay.
So, first of all, this little portion of the rest of the board can't, so basically...
Take the microphone, please, thank you. Got to get lapel mics.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just, I just...
So, basically, if you have garage in the front, as we said, just a link into the, into the garage, okay, when you have it on the side, first of all, this all is additional, because when you start to write a house, plus, this is not just a little bit of additional, it's all turnaround and everything, so just a lot wasted points of grass. So, obviously, this is not going to be, this is existing, correct? Because as and now has the driveway, and then into the garage, and then turnaround, and then all of the go back, okay? But if you do this, this addition, we're going to remove that and then back to grass, just kind of, just like this, have just a single garage.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Feedback from the board?
Yeah, oh, go ahead.
I'm just a little confused, the existing house is the one on the left, and it's symmetrical, looking at the left and the right side, so are we saying, when he's not building any more of the existing homes, the way it looks like that, they're all going to be different? Which means this, dissimilar? Or we're going to have, other houses are going to look the same in terms of the existing? Or they're all going to be different? That's a little confused here. You have an existing that, that looks symmetrical, I don't know how the other seven are going to look.
I think what the applicant's proposing now versus what they were proposing before is they're actually proposing to change what was existing, so that lot 8 home that's built on the top left corner, they're proposing to add on a garage, to make it similar to the other seven homes that were proposed to you previously. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, so you have one dissimilar and seven similar.
Well, they want to, I think the idea is they're adding the garage to, A, increase the building footprint and gross floor area of the existing home, as well as add an addition to have that garage on the side, so that it's consistent with the other seven that they're proposing, which, for the board, one of our comments is that if the applicant would like to make lot 8 part of this application formally, then they should submit an ARB form and an application associated with that lot, like they've done for all of the other lots essentially, and a plot line, things like that.
So, Larry, just keep me honest, these are, this is, this is your book from March, this is what you were originally proposing?
Yeah.
And then the board took exception with the garages in the front, the way they made the homes look, and we asked you to move them to the side, so you went from, I thought I had it open, sorry, not trying to get everybody seasick here, so you went from that to...
This.
This, down here in the bottom right.
Yeah. Again, the board, you said you want to take a look at it to see how, how it goes, if it makes the house look smaller or anything, to me, it does, you know, make the house look smaller, just, you know, it's a little wider, because you don't see the fact that it's not as deep, you only see that it's, the width hasn't been reduced.
I think it makes the house look smaller, because it doesn't have that garage door in the fr, I know it's going to maybe sound weird, but the garage door to me is like a big mass. This with the windows and that, it makes it look more like a house than it does just a big structure, but that's my take on it. What's everybody else thinking, rattling in their head?
I thought we looked at this because some lots were long and narrow, and some lots were wide, and we wanted to see how the different houses would look on the wide lot.
Right.
This is the long and narrow, and to me, the one on the right looks attractive to me for the wider lot.
So, you're, what you're saying is a, is a combination, Rich, on the wider lots, the one with the garage on the side and, well, sorry, the narrower lots, the ones with the garage?
Yeah, I mean, there are wider lots, and then there are some, some of them are long and narrow.
Yeah. So, you're looking like at a combination of the two of them, potentially?
I, I wouldn't have a problem, I mean, I don't know how the other board members feel.
I think mixing it up would be a good idea. Have less of a cookie cutter look to it.
So, half with it on the side and half with it in the front?
Yeah.
And then we'd be pretty much okay with the...
I would be.
Yes, yes, yes.
I agree with...
And I think the nature of the garage door is part of the aesthetic.
I think, yeah, I think that was, is my...
No, but I mean, there are garage doors that are really ugly, and there are garage doors that are more attractive.
Okay, so we've got a, we would have to give Mr. Hartman here, do we, where's the, hold on, you do have, sorry, there's been a few, there's been a few reiterations of these plans, Larry, I'm trying to find the right, I'm trying to find the right ones.
One major issue with the garage side, that garage side, which means the drainage, that it's an existing lot, which might have an issue with the drainage, things like that.
What about impervious surface? Would that be an issue?
That's the problem, it's more area, that's...
Right, runoff is a different thing than impervious.
Yeah, I have only one wide lot, so maybe one is not going to change, so basically, it's only, it's only lot, oh, lot one is wide.
Seven is wide, right?
Seven's also narrow and longer, but at least a little bit wider than, plus now, it gets very close to the cul-de-sac where the house is, and has the frontage very big, but, potentially, lot six, we, because it gets a little bit wider as it gets into the lot.
Lot four, Larry.
And...
Yeah, lot four is...
Lot four is really, really narrow.
Lot four is pretty wide, too.
No, four is wide.
Where's this, okay, oh, this is not a lot wide, I guess.
That's not a lot wide, yeah.
This is not a lot wide, okay.
So, you have this here, this is a wide lot, you have six, right?
Six is where the house is getting a little wider, yeah. That's they've got an agreement, yeah, it's a, it's a green belt, but just to make sure...
Which is this dotted line here.
Yeah, so, lot four, that is, was, it's just the zone, okay.
Yeah, it's just the zone.
So, I guess it's lot four and six.
Lot four and six, yeah.
And then one, right, the two at the entrance, essentially, lot one.
At least, yeah, lot one, I think two is narrow, two and three are fairly the same as width, four gets bigger.
I'm going to make an approach between lot four and five.
Five, I don't think you can do it in, because of just how it's configured, you're going to be in the green belt.
Yeah.
Six, I think, I, potentially, I think you have the room for, in six.
Uh...
So, actually, that works, it works out to be almost every other lot.
Let me see, what is that? What was, no, hopefully it's made, okay, now that's...
Yeah, there's no, that's not going to, that's just, so the village has the right to push the snow.
Correct.
I don't think it's going to change where your driveway is.
Well, it's going to preclude you from putting your driveway there.
But, but that's regardless right now, that's, that's...
Would it fit on those top left lots?
Four?
Like two, three?
So, right now, I just was trying to write down what you guys were saying, so if we go around the subdivision as if you were driving in on the left, it would be, number, lot one is considered wider, lot two narrower, three narrower, four wider, five narrower, six wider, seven narrower, eight wider.
Right, and that's if he wants to make eight part of the application.
Right, I just wrote it down, because I wasn't sure.
Again, I will, what happens...
Again, um, I will, what happens if the, doesn't work with the drainage, the bigger driveway?
You mean you're over in impervious?
Yeah. Actually, the house got smaller, but it got smaller with two hundred square feet, um, that, that area of driveway is gonna be, it's gonna add, to each one, it's gonna add minus eight, twenty-five, a turnaround is twenty-five, twenty-eight.
But I think you were, I know there's, I know we've got a set in here that hasn't.
They all say less than twenty.
Yeah, they're alls.
So, we don't have a specific calculation?
No, but they're less than twenty now, so.
But he's saying if the extra driveway, what if he puts it over twenty?
Then-
And I think we still need to talk about the lots that potentially impact the green belt. So, it sounds like you're giving, sorry.
Go ahead.
It sounds like you're giving Mr. Hartman some direction on what you're thinking of for the lots, and obviously, I will disperse what I just read out for the, where they're located. Um, and I think things that you are still looking for, maybe are just placing that then in a box on here to kind of see then what the limits of disturbance will be too, and the impervious surface coverage, to make sure that they don't go over impervious surface, but also that they're not encroaching into that green belt buffer that everybody was just talking about. Cause I know that was an issue, it was really close on a couple lots, and I thought that you discussed pulling it out, and you might have been able to, but now, if you have more of a house design, they might be able to further flush that.
Yeah, cause I think it was five or four, one of those lots where they were right up against the green belt.
I think it was five.
Thought.
Now, we made it a little-
You made it a little small, but-
So, not, not, now, we revise it again, because all the houses got smaller this time, so that's also in the out of lot five, we do a little more.
Right, so you won't, but I'm saying now you won't even have to go into it for clearing and grading at this point, if you got, probably, right?
It got, it got, not a lot, it got two feet smaller, that's why, but I made it-
Use a shovel instead of a machine? Use a little, use a shovel instead of a machine?
Definitely try, um, definitely try, try about that. Again, I, I'm a little bit concerned about the drainage issue, I mean-
Well, then if you prove us wrong, you prove us wrong in-
I, that's the owner, he says that Mr., the Mr. Luck, on one of the sheets, I don't know if you guys have, has a calculation with it, and, uh-
Mr. Luck, you know, had to explain that the reason why you needed the drainage is only because we changed the driveway, the driveway's smaller, and that's why you can use everything. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, sit it back, the bigger driveway, you're not gonna need it.
Again, I, I'm looking at it right now, like it'd be a more-
Please use the microphone.
Um, again, I, I can look at the previous one, just right now, I think we can get a little bit creative, and I can make two of them work without that. If you have that subdivision one more time.
Chris, he's-
Sorry, I'll go back. So, I was looking at what the, the owner was talking about, cause like in this, what is this? The plot plan for five?
I want you to look at the letter, what John Luck submitted, he's, he's-
I gotta look to see if I have it on my computer. If not, I have it at home, but-
I have his December twenty-seventh letter, and that one doesn't talk about it.
About the split, where he's, he's explaining why you need a split.
Okay, um-
Again, I can try and be a little creative with lot four, okay? Even if I have this aside, I can kind of get eight, a lesser driveway, because, because I can start the driveway over here instead of over there.
Right, so you don't need as much coming in.
Try, I can be creative with this one, same with the lot seven, and if I can do the driveway like this, I can kind of shorten the driveway, is that, this is to the side, because this is already in a previous area, area. I'm just gonna add a little taller, this one, and this one, I can drive, I can be creative, have a little bit-
Look, look, I'm gonna get a lot of lot eight, look, I'm gonna get a lot of lot eight, look.
Uh, four and seven, yeah.
Um, if I may, so, I think, again, the, the board's given some feedback, um, there's probably some homework to do here. I think that the board is interested in seeing, um, the garages rearranged from one, four, seven, and eight, six and eight, one, four, six, and eight.
Only if he wants to make eight as part of the application, right?
Right, well, I think that's something important for the board to kind of provide direction on as well, because I think previously, there was a concern that lot eight was substantially smaller.
It is substantially, yeah.
So, if he adds the addition, he's bringing, he's reducing that disparity. So, um, if that's something that the board agrees with, then the applicant should provide those materials for lot eight. Um, and I mean, when I say materials, like your typical forms, as well as the plot plan. Um, and then ultimately, whatever is decided, you will, you will, the board will need to see revised plot plans for each of the lots where the building footprint is revised, uh, as well as the driveway configurations. And then the only other thing I just wanna offer is if for some reason, the driveways for those four lots would throw you over the threshold for coverage, then the applicant should consider a reduction in the size of the homes to offset it.
Or, what about permissible? Permitable?
Permeable?
There you go.
Yeah.
Pavers.
That's, I mean, it's an interesting thought, but, you know, a lot of the times, those things aren't maintained, you know what I mean? And then you kind of reduce, like, over time, you-
It just takes away the benefit of having them, right?
Exactly, you know what I mean?
Okay. I was just throwing it out there as, as a suggestion.
Again, obviously, um, if the board is okay with the size of the house, we will submit the wise, but, but it's just gets smaller, I mean, that's not, that's not that hard, um, it makes things easier. Um, if the board wants to see that addition, we'll do that, just on their, if the board if they want it, they want it, um, we'll do it. Um, same thing with the size, if the board is okay with it, we're obviously gonna change all of that.
When you, when you say size, you mean the, the latest submission size?
Correct.
Okay.
All the size.
No, I'm just, because we have a couple submissions, I wanna make sure we're, we're talking about the right thing.
So, yeah, so obviously, we'll do all of that, but you just, I didn't wanna do it one there, if the board is, see, yeah, um, if the board is okay with it. Um, we will definitely try to reduce submission if the board is okay, again, I wanna repeat that to the board, but the board will definitely try to fit in this and this without having to, so we're gonna have a little bit of a mix with the two sides, work with the side that you need to see if possible, not the lot.
If possible, six, if you can. I know you're thinking you can't, but-
Six is gonna make a little bit of vision, because I can put the driveway over here. Uh, very, very warm driveway, I'll try my best, um-
I have faith in you, Larry. You're good with the mouse.
But that's, that's in general, I just push a little bit more, but again-
You make it look pretty.
Reduce lot eight, but even for the addition, the same amount of driveway, yeah.
But I, but I think the board is telling you with lot, adding lot, adding the, the thing to lot eight will make the neighborhood homogeneous.
Correct.
Harmonious.
The, the, the addition, lot eight, it doesn't add the previous area.
Right.
Because you're moving the driveway.
You're taking the driveway out and putting a building, it's a wash.
It's a, yeah, it's a wash. So, with other things, with other lots, um, we'll definitely try, and my eyes has two, two everywhere.
Oh, it's two better, I'm gonna say two is better than none, right? If you can get to-
Especially it's in the middle, so you kind of have, this is lot eight, and that's already has the one on the side, then you have to, then this is already on the side, and you have another two, um, and you can, yeah.
Yeah, so, in, in essence, you're trying to vary the appearance, but without disturbing the permeability, so that the permeability takes precedence over the similarities. So that, if you, if you, if you, if because of the permeability issues, you can't have a side entrance with a big turnaround, bigger driveway, then the front entrance would take precedence, that would be acceptable, not as desirable, but because of the permeability issue, that becomes the, the main constraint.
Yeah, and I said, two, I know, I'll have a bit of fight, but, but I think, uh, definitely.
Okay.
So, I have one more item that was, um, a big discussion last time, so since we're having all this good talk, I wanted to raise it now. We sent Larry the three hundred foot-
Yes.
-map. Um, I don't know if you wanna show that and just make sure that you're comfortable with that, so that he can go back and do what we all just talked about.
That's three hundred foot map?
That's the one. So, he provided you with samples from, um, the surrounding lots within those three hundred feet, um, like Sherwood Court is the residential really, then there's some townhouses and some commercial across the street. So, for similarity and dissimilarity, that's the range. And I don't know if you have the photo submission?
Um, the size, the, the sizes, lot sizes, um, details of the house, I have, um, the-
Yeah, I saw, no, I saw the chart for the square footage, I was going more for, um, style, that was one of the things that they talked about, so-
Appearances.
Yeah, appearance.
Have on the previous, on the previous submission, I have pictures.
Okay.
I think you have previous of Sherwood. I don't think you have outside of Sherwood, because you got a few houses outside of Sherwood. You like to, you like to focus on Sherwood, but we have to focus on the full three hundred foot.
Okay, because obviously, that's closest to one of the, it has a different field where, uh, completely.
And this board, this board understands that, I mean-
Do you wanna see the five ninety-four, the other five eighty is a commercial, I would show that.
Yeah.
Um, five ninety doesn't look like it has a house, five ninety-four, five ninety-
Five ninety-six, five ninety-four, and five ninety, and five-
Five fifty-nine is also, um, multifamily.
Yeah.
That's, that would be, that would be, I think. Five fifty-nine is a multifamily, and those others, one-two, whatever it is, one-to-one, five, two-four, those are condos.
Yeah, those are the townhouses over there.
Oh, I mean, this one also, five ninety-nine, nine-five ninety-one?
Yeah.
I mean, in the future, again, any guys, any project, you wanna see all the houses of three hundred feet?
Well, that is where you have, that's where you need to pick your comparisons from. So, you know, you fo, you focus solely on Sherwood Court, because they were the closest to your project, but by the letter of our code, we have to look at the three hundred foot boundary circle. So, I think this is one of the first projects that you're doing where you've got a mix of different type of homes in the, in the project area. A lot of the projects you've done are very similar, they're in the same neighborhood, so everything is pretty much the same. This is a little bit different over here. So, we're, that's what we're trying to blend, the, your owners, what the owner wants to get done, what we think is gonna look best in the neighborhood, and-
Do you want us to picture some of those?
A couple, not every single one of them.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think you put it, you put it accurately when you said this is one of the first ones where there's different styles within that area, so the board, you don't want a picture of every single one, but you want a good sampling of the randomness.
Some of the condos, some are built in the seventies, some were built in nineteen hundred, so you got, you got a pretty good mix of, of, um, development over there.
Again, I focused on Sherwood because that's the mission, that's the mission, it has, wanted to look just like Sherwood, you know, nice, all the same, but it's these houses, um, that's what I get.
No, I get it, and I, I get why you did what you did, but we, we is, it have to, we have, this is what we have to do. So, does the board have any other feedback? And I just wanna get on the record, Larry, you're okay with extending the action deadline from tonight, because again, we're past the close of the public hearing, so either we have to take action tonight?
Yeah, I understand that. Um, again, as, I just wanna hear one more, I just wanna hear that the board is okay with the reduced sizes, and again, towards, I mean, this is-
All right, just so Larry's clear, everybody's okay with the, the reduced sizes of the homes?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
Let's get this work, continue work, yeah.
Okay.
And the addition to lot eight is something that the board not said?
Yeah, that's another part of that.
You're gonna add the addition into lot eight, right?
Yeah, that's also like the one area of the board, that's what they want.
Yes, we want the addition into lot eight, so I'm seeing head shaking, okay. Any other questions, concerns? I think it was good, I think it was a good meeting, Larry, I think you got some good feedback tonight.
Okay.
He's so close with his emotions.
Yeah.
So, if that's the case, we do just need to hear from him that he is okay with extending that timeframe.
I thought he said yes.
Oh, I skipped ahead to then write that the planning board was good with the reduced size.
Okay, so I'm just confirming you're okay with not us, with extending the deadline for us to take action?